Let's call the Public Safety Committee meeting to order, Madam Secretary, if you agree with the role.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Let's improve the agenda.
Second.
A motion, second for the agenda, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, we have an agenda, one of you gentlemen would like to take that item?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we begin the discussion of public safety cameras.
Second.
And, Mr. Chairman, I have a suggestion, I had talked to Chief Trelka earlier today and thought maybe we could get a little background information, and then we could kind of talk among ourselves about what we see as a way to proceed.
That'd be great. Chief Trelka giving us that background?
Yep. Dan Trelka, Chief of Police, and Sandy should be here, because I know there's a lot going on with the infrastructure of the cameras that are on the traffic signals, and the cameras that are currently on the traffic signals are not enforcement cameras, but for several of them, for several of the intersections, and I believe right now we have 200 lighted intersections in the city of Waterloo, and ultimately the plan is to have cameras, if I'm not mistaken, at all of them. A lot of that infrastructure and the cameras is, we're receiving funding, if I'm not mistaken, from the federal government and from the state government. We have used those for investigations in the past, if they were recording, many are not recording, so we're getting to that point with the infrastructure where they will be recording and we can utilize them, and it sounds like a lot of progress has been made. There are other pieces of the puzzle that we want to utilize to enhance our ability to engage in this type of investigations. We don't have the manpower, even if we had cameras all over the city, we don't have the manpower to constantly surveil, to watch the monitors, so what's important for an investigatory standpoint is for them to record. The traffic enforcement cameras, we will have the ability to access them, and they do indeed record as well. These are the cameras that are going to be issuing citations, let's say we had a bank robbery and we had a vehicle description and a direction of the vehicle, we could anticipate what intersection that vehicle could potentially be going through, or, God forbid, an abduction, and we had a vehicle description and a direction of a vehicle, we could anticipate the direction that vehicle is going in, during our investigation, we could pull up the recordings of those cameras and try and see if there's any evidence on them. Also, let's say we have a critical incident going on anywhere in the city where we wanted to get a live feed, some of our cameras, we have the ability to access them with a live feed and see what's going on at that particular point. Last week I did, I met with a local vendor here in town, and he made me aware of a businessman who, and this is another piece of the puzzle that we're looking at that we could potentially add to this whole scenario. There's a businessman downtown that wants to put up several cameras, 10, I believe, is the number, and many of those cameras would have access to public ways, but they're having connectivity issues. On tonight's council agenda, we're going to take ownership of the tower, and the company we were talking to thought that our tower could be a potential solution for those connectivity issues. In other words, they could mount an antenna on that tower to assist this business owner in connectivity with his cameras, and what I envision, and I talked to the business owner today, is just give us access to those cameras. Again, another piece of that puzzle. In regard to equipment, the police department wants to acquire for these public safety cameras, I will call them, I thought our best option would be pole cameras, but there are other options out there. Talking to my staff and talking to this company last week, there's, on a regular basis, we will seize drug dealers' cars, and they will ultimately end up getting forfeited. If we could just take one of these cars and mount cameras in that car and move it throughout the city in our hotspots, that may be more beneficial for us than pole cameras, and another option is, this company has a box with cameras inside of it that we could mount and move from location to location, because with our current pole cameras right now, a local company moves them for us without any charge, and they also pay for the electricity to those cameras, so it's a pretty good partnership, but with this box, the officers would be able to move it when they wanted to. With the local company moving the pole cameras, if we wanted it moved tomorrow, that may not, we have to work around their schedule. So, we are looking at several different alternatives, several different options, trying to determine what is best for us as we proceed in this before we decide exactly what we want to purchase. Now, these pole cameras we currently have, they're mounted throughout several locations in the city. We generally like to put them in our hotspots, I like to say in areas where we've seen high incidents of shootings and gun violence, but we do have one or two in areas, and one I'll spill the beans is in Lincoln Park. There's the potential there with the events and stuff that we have for something to happen, and we have that pole camera mounted in Lincoln Park just in case something would happen, then we would have video-recorded evidence to conduct an investigation. Matter of fact, I believe we had a bank robbery about three years ago, right at the corner up here, and we did get good evidence off that camera. I also plan on bringing back, we tried to get the business camera ordinance passed, we weren't successful, the business owners had some concerns, so I want to bring that back in a lesser version, a version that I think will withstand the council scrutiny so we can pass it, maybe a grandfather clause, and again, that's just another piece of this puzzle for this overall surveillance system that we could have. So, I see Sandy's here, so that's the background, we'll answer any questions you may have now.
I think, if I remember correctly, the biggest issue with these cameras was going to be the financing of them and where that money was going to come from, that, from what I understood, was the biggest issue at this point in time with this, and I asked a question last week as far as the impact that it would have on the cameras in the cars, and you mentioned something about liability, and that is a concern for me from a standpoint of, are we putting cameras here and taking away from here that's going to generate a liability that we don't really want or need?
Well, and I'm going to be blunt, the way this whole process evolved, it kind of put all departments at a disadvantage, and the police department. The good thing is, the police department has a lot of different things going on now with options, it'd be nice if, with those options, if we could wait, give it time down the road, and see where there may be excess someplace in CIP budgets, instead of making that decision now, because there is, this program is progressing, but there's a lot going on. I mean, there's a lot of funding that we're receiving from other sources for the overall system that Sandy can touch on, because I can't keep up with all, and I'm not a tech guy either, so, yeah, but that is my concern. We're robbing Peter to pay Paul, and priorities have been established amongst the departments, so this threw a difficult wrinkle in the whole process.
Mr. Chairman, Director, we're, at least it sounds to me like we're making some small progress on getting public safety cameras out there.
Without a doubt, yes, we are.
And so, at least it sounds to me like you're committed to growing that system, because it sounds like a very effective tool, and I like the idea of business people sharing their resources, you know, when you see a bomb attacked or something, or something really serious in the big cities, it's amazing how they go and get all these cameras, you know, that are all around the area, and, you know, see people, and if, you know, if we could get our network and maybe their network, they being the business owners.
Well, when I talk to the technological people, here's how I explain it to them, I'm your basic cop, it's the same with our police portables, when I take that police portable off my hip and push the button and talk when I need help, I expect help to come. I can't tell you how that all happens, the technology of it. So, the way I explain it with these, the people who are involved in our system, the technological people, I want to look at my computer screen, look at a Google map, and see camera icons on there, both private and public, and simply double-click on that icon and get a live feed, that's what I envision, and every technologic, every person with, who has the knowledge to make this happen, has said readily, "Well, that's easy to do, it just takes time, infrastructure, and money," but that's my ultimate goal, is to have several hundred cameras throughout the community that a police officer can simply access with a double-click.
If you ever looked at the DOT website, you can go to Waterloo, Iowa, and see they have, you know, 10 or 12 cameras on their system, and you can do exactly what you said, you can go click on a camera and sit there at Ainsborough and watch people drive up and down. It's kind of shaky, it's not perfect yet, but that technology is there, that would be nice, especially an officer, say he gets a call, you know, before he goes or on the way or something, he could check that area and see if, you know, do we need backup, or is it a cat that shorted the system, you know what I mean? You could kind of predetermine your threat before you got there with the cameras. Anyway, it sounds like you're doing exactly what we wished you were going to be doing.
Even a traffic crash, that's a powerful tool for a dispatcher to have a live feed at an intersection where there's a traffic crash to direct responding police and fire units, and we'll get there. I would say within five years, I don't know that for certain, but that's what my instincts are telling me based on what I know.
Are we still, and maybe this is for Sandy, if we had these deployed every place, we would still need, we'd probably have to have another staff person down in your shop to monitor the, not monitor, but run the system.
Right, yes.
Mr. Chairman, maybe Sandy could give us the update on the deployment.
Well, if we could just kind of back up for a minute before we go too far along here, I think where this whole conversation started, Chief, is a year ago maybe, that we started talking about security cameras, and I think that morphed over into speed cameras and red light cameras, but I think the original conversation was about getting cameras into our neighborhoods where people don't feel safe, and my understanding is we had not had any of those put up, and I'm a little bit confused because I hear we do have some, and then I hear we don't have some. So, I guess first, I'd like to know, do we have any?
Yes, yes, we do.
Okay.
About half a dozen.
Okay, can you tell me where those are at?
I will tell you in a one-on-one conversation.
Well, let me back up again. Okay, so, I think we've kind of always referred to Dubuque as the model for this, because they've been doing this for so long, they're doing it so well. I've been meeting with Dubuque council members, I spent about half a day last week with the Dubuque police chief, where their cameras are at is clearly and proudly identified, because they happen to believe that notifying people of that tends to cause bad things not to happen. They've not had one instance of a camera being demolished, which I would think would be the reason we wouldn't want to have that up there, but I would certainly rather stop somebody from doing something rather than catching them after the fact. So, that's what they've been doing, and I'm not saying they're the, you know, the picture of perfection, but I think most of us would agree that Dubuque's years ahead of us in most other communities. Based on some of those conversations, I'd also add, because I thought our biggest obstacle was the infrastructure, the connectivity, because Dubuque has been doing that stuff for years where most other communities haven't, because they had cable TV before most of us did, and so I thought our biggest challenge was the funding for the infrastructure, so again, I, being a businessperson, went out and talked to the business community, MediaCom has an interest in joining with us, they've done this again in other communities, but I haven't been able to find out where would we want to locate these cameras. I've asked, no answer. They cannot guarantee that they'd be able to support this, but until we know where we'd like to put them, that conversation's really not going anywhere. In Dubuque, they do not have any full-time people that sit there and monitor cameras, they have their E911 facility that I tour, just like we do, but what they're doing is they're capturing all this information. Now, if it's an immediate thing, that's a different situation, they then assign a person to go and look at that camera, but they don't have anybody sitting there all day, every day, but they're capturing that information so then they have it if and when they need it. And another way they've been able to pay for a lot of this, and I think you mentioned this earlier, but I'm not sure that we're using it, is drug forfeiture money, so that's where they've been able to come up with funding for a lot of what they're doing, and I forget, I didn't bring the file with me, but I know they've got a boatload of cameras around town, but I think that, you know, I thought, going back again to the original conversation, I thought that's what this committee was hoping to accomplish. Now, I don't know, looking at you two gentlemen, if I missed something, or...
My understanding, Councilman Schmidt, was is that there were individuals in the community, one in particular, who had an interest in getting cameras put up in the neighborhood for safety, simply because of the fact that at one point in time with a previous chief, he had actually had cameras in his neighborhood, requested them, they were put up, some issues went away, so he felt like that would be an opportunity to make some of the other issues go away. That was where I got the actual cameras that we're talking about now, the idea behind those came from.
Okay.
Mr. Lind, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't.
Okay. Sandy, do you have anything to add to the conversation?
Sandy Griggo, Interim Public Works Director, Dan pretty much covered what we've been doing as a committee. What we do in traffic is, of course, video detection cameras and also monitoring cameras. We have at this time, and it is all infrastructure, okay, we're running fiber with grants, I have not come and asked the city for money, we've been very fortunate in being awarded grant money, grant funding for traffic safety or Iowa Clean Air attainment. At this time, we have, the city itself, has about 28 miles of fiber. Last week you approved us applying for a grant for Ainsborough Avenue, and next week I'll be bringing another application for Broadway from Park Road out to Airport Boulevard. If, you know, if we're awarded those grants, that means fiber will be run in all those That's one of the biggest, I can't say problems, but areas of infrastructure that we need to really make these cameras work. We will be putting up more monitoring cameras that definitely help the police department, they record for 30 days. As time goes on, as Fifth and Sixth Street has worked on, we're hoping to bring cameras on all those locations to monitor Highway 63, everything that's being reconstructed at this time, there's part of 218, Sam Aronan, there's the new areas of Highway 63, those are all going to have fiber interconnect, and they will all have monitoring cameras, so that in turn will help the police department too. You also have to remember that we are not far behind Dubuque. We don't have the cameras out there, but we are getting the infrastructure like they have, we've toured and visited with them, and we have many, many locations that are future planned to have monitoring cameras. Then we can also branch out into neighborhoods, we have worked with MediaCom on some of our cameras also, but if we can use our own fiber and our interconnect, there's no cost. So, it takes time, and we are doing it the right way. It's going to take a little bit longer, but we want to make sure that we're doing it right, so we don't have to go back in and redo something, or, you know, whatever, we're doing state-of-the-art equipment. Chris Youngblood isn't here, but he's working with us also, and we have to have the backbone and the memory in the Public Works Building to bring all this in, it'll all come through into the Public Works Building to be recorded and downloaded, so it's a vast memory capacity that you need to do all this with cameras, and we are working on that. It's progressing, but like I said, we're doing it the right way.
Well, and then Dubuque, again, they are, anytime there's new construction, new road construction, or rebuild, I should say, new fibers always put in as part of that, and I don't know, Noel, you don't have any idea if Eric's doing that, do you? When we rebuild a road, whether like Kimball Avenue, for example, did we, I have no idea, because I don't remember that ever being brought up.
Requested, no.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, they're doing that, but, but again, what I hear you talking about are main arterial roadways, which that's great, and that's all part of the puzzle, but where I thought this original conversation started, going back to what Councilman Loggins said, was, or Councilman Amos, was that there are certain residential areas of the city where it would be ideal to have public safety cameras, and that is what Dubuque has done, and that is how they caught the murder suspect at one of their parks, and so that's what I'm talking about, and the city is probably never going to pull fiber to those neighborhoods because there'd be no reason to, because there's no light signals, but MediaCom may have, and no guarantees, but they may have infrastructure in those neighborhoods for cable TV that we might be able to just use that, we'd have to buy the cameras, they're not going to buy any cameras for us, but number one, that would save us the cost of pulling infrastructure into certain areas where otherwise we wouldn't, because it may already be there, and number two, you know, I mean, where this conversation kind of heated up last week was $25,000 for poles, where again, we may or may not need those if, depending on which cameras we're talking about, the poles or the infrastructure may already be there. Makes sense?
Yes, however, there is a, I don't know if it's a G.I.S. map, but it has an overlay of all the cable, or all the fiber in the city. There's fiber in the city that we don't own, that private entities own, that we could possibly work with them too, and it's not just MediaCom, it's other entities that, we just worked with a company last year that, we basically shared the fiber, where they didn't have it and we had our interconnect, they ran through with us, and then where we didn't have it, and it was between their spots, they ran it for us, so we made a good connection within the city with them. So, there's other entities out there and businesses that we can work with to, should I say, hook up, or, you know, make the whole system work too, so, and we're looking at that.
Mr. Chairman, Sandy, when you're talking about these grants, does the grant include the camera? Can you buy cameras with those grants in addition to the cable?
We are fortunate enough, and some of the grants that have been awarded us will have cameras also.
Oh, good.
It's just, it depends on what we're going after, and why we're going after it, and what it will include.
And, as Councilman Schmidt said, you're kind of talking about the major loop around town, or the arterials.
Right.
But what you're saying is, if we get those done, and those are ours, and we get little guys off those that they own, if we let them use ours, they'll let us use theirs?
Well, that's a whole agreement that would have to be done legally.
Is that a simple way to look at it? Is that how we're getting interconnectivity?
It could be, it could be in certain areas, yes, with certain entities.
Because, as Councilman Schmidt said, there are places in town that nobody's ever going to run cable to.
And, and there's also...
I mean, fiber.
Right, but there's also a wireless connection too that we can do, so some of our cameras are wireless.
Can you put a wireless camera in a remote location?
If you have the connection, yes.
Over here, get an antenna on our fiber, somehow hook it to our fiber.
No, wireless is a wireless.
Okay.
But we have wireless cameras that come back into our building that are not connected with fiber.
But where do they, what is the wire, does it go, is the antenna here?
It has an antenna, yeah. There's antennas on this, and then there's on our building too.
So, the camera goes to here, but that this goes to your building?
And, and we can bring them up on our monitors in our building.
Are we using a consultant, a public safety camera consultant?
We have a consultant on each of our projects that we're doing, we haven't gotten one to come into the public safety part yet, we're not ready for that yet.
Do you, do you want to contact with one? That used to be somebody in the General Assembly that contacted me a while ago, and he has a company here, owns, knows, or something, a guy that would love to come and just talk to you and see if you're even interested in talking to him?
Sure, we'd be open for that, we could bring in Chris.
Could I have him contact you? I don't want to get involved if, I mean, I'm not...
You know what, it doesn't hurt to talk.
He's not a friend, he's not, he just called me.
And it would be good to sit down with somebody and just see what they have to offer.
But that's his specialty.
Sure.
Public safety cameras, not traffic cameras.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I really have a concern with the robbing Peter to pay Paul analogy, and as far as I'm feeling like at the risk of upsetting some individuals, maybe we should just go ahead and slow down on this a little bit as far as the public safety camera aspect of it, until we get more information to where we can move forward and really have some meat to this, to where we can actually look at putting up some cameras and know where the money's going to come from without it impacting some other aspect of a budget or something like that.
I would certainly agree with that, although I thought that we had, in a previous meeting, had agreed that we would spend the money for the cameras, and again, my...
It was where it came from.
Right, and my proposal here is that I just want to see us spend money on cameras, not on poles, not on infrastructure, and so, I don't know if we can do that in conjunction with MediaCom, but MediaCom has indicated an openness to working with us to benefit the community, so, you know, when I hear five years, the people I talk to in the third ward and the fourth ward are not interested in waiting five years.
Understood.
You know, this has been an ongoing issue for the 10 years I've been on the council, if we've made much progress, I guess I'm not aware of it, I didn't know we had a camera in Lincoln Park, but I certainly know of areas of town that wish they had cameras, so Chief, could you get me maybe your top 10 worst areas, or the top 10 areas you would most like to see cameras installed in? I can get those to MediaCom and see whether or not maybe we're just wasting our time because those are in areas that they don't have the facilities, I mean, I don't know, but I've been asking for the addresses and I can't get them, and until we have that, the conversation's not going anywhere.
I, yeah, I had identified like seven areas for local pastors about two months ago that I shared with the council members.
I remember that, you shared that with me?
Yes, sir, I sent an email to everybody.
Hmm, well, I'll have to go back and look, thank you.
Anything else, any of you gentlemen have anything to say?
Chief Trelka? Yeah, isn't it true that, I mean, you have seven areas now, those seven areas can move all around, those areas many times are considered fluid?
Correct, that's a good way of describing them, fluid, that's why we don't like to publicly identify them, because the people who are engaging in this behavior find out about that, and they simply move a block away.
And, one of the aspects of this that has not been addressed, which I hope the Public Safety Committee would address, and that is about privacy issues for those people that might be affected by this unduly with any kind of surveillance camera, and I know that there are civil liberties issues with this, but it's also an issue that has been brought up for the last two months, at least maybe in three months, and the Human Rights Commission of Waterloo, and they have a tool, and I know that I have said that I wanted to sit down and talk to you about that, Chief Trelka, and I just haven't got to that yet, but, but it is a racial equity and social justice toolkit for programs, policies, and budgets, and I would, I hope to make a copy of this, give to all council members, because I think on any consideration...
on any consideration of public safety cameras, that you would include this as something that you would look at to consider before instituting any kind of program. Not that it would inhibit or delay any kind of program, but that it should be something that any kind of program that deals with low-income neighborhoods, minority neighborhoods, or just neighborhoods in general should go through this to have a opinion and recommendation from the Human Rights Commission in Waterloo.
I would just mention that, excuse me, that was something that was discussed and has been discussed in Dubuque, and they've been able to resolve those issues. Basically, what it is, is that what the camera shows, what a officer would see if he were on the street or in the neighborhood or in his car or whatever. So that, those issues have been resolved, but I could get that information for you.
Well, I, that addresses Dubuque, not Waterloo. And what I'm suggesting is that this kind of tool be used in a program like this that is sensitive to privacy issues to some people within our community. And I believe that we represent all the people in this community, and that's why I'd like to see you take a look at this, this tool. Abraham Funchess, I know, would like to sit and talk to the council about it and the whole, but I will get copies of this and give it to everybody on council. Okay?
True.
Councilman Pires, did you have something?
No, I guess maybe I do have a question for Sandy. Did I hear you right that the monitor cameras can draw down a picture for 30 days? Are they recorded for 30 days?
Yes, our monitoring cameras, we hold for 30 days and then it erases it and just keeps recording.
Right. So they are somewhat at least recorded. If there was an event, we could pull that down and the police could look at it.
And we have worked a couple of times on US 63 with the police department.
And we think there's around 200 cameras out there right now.
We don't have that many monitoring cameras out there yet, but, and also as University Avenue is redone, that will all have fiber, a fiber connection also.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anybody have anything else?
Mr. Chairman, one quick thought. I've talked to several neighborhood committees, people, and some of them in high-income areas, their comment is, okay, if you don't want them in the problem areas, we'll take them. If you're all worried about, you know, whatever you're worried about, there are people in town that said, I want them out there. I want to be safe. So, you know, if we put them in Ottoman Park, then would everybody get mad in wherever that they got them first? And if we put them in a bad area first, they're going to be mad because they're there? You know, it's, we're just running around in circles here. I think we just have to do like Dubuque did, put these things up and deploy them, and let's be safe in Waterloo. Mr. Chairman, Councilman Lind, you were staring at me as you were addressing that. This diagnostic tool is not to negate anything that you have been talking about here. It's just a tool to be used to look at racial equity, social justice issues that might arise so that before anything is begun, it goes through this process. That's all it is. I'm not in any way denigrating what the Public Safety Committee is talking about doing here. I'm just adding something to it for the benefit of others and probably everybody in our community, Councilman Lind. I understand, but it just, you know, every time we come up with a solution, there's always another governmental roadblock. We seem, you know, the government is terrible about so many layers of approvals to get anything done. And I'm just, it's frustrating to me that we can't just do something we've all agreed to without going off on all of these other tangents. But anyway, I understand what you're saying, and if you distribute that, at least we can read it and see what you're talking about. So we agree then, Councilman Lind, that human rights is something to be considered? I'm not talking about human rights. I'm talking about cameras.
This is the Public Safety Committee, Councilman Morrissey, we're, this isn't the Human Rights Commission.
Hand, guys.
Got a motion adjourned?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor, second fiber, saying aye?
Aye.
Or adjourned?
Let's call our Human Resources Committee to order. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Mr. Whopper?
Here.
Mr. Jacobs?
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda as proposed.
Second.
Motion a second on the agenda. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion passes. We have three requests today. Why don't we take the first two together? Somebody would take those?
Mr. Morrissey?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following requests. First is from Leisure Services Director for authorization to begin the civil service process for the position of park maintenance, two forestry, and to make an appointment from the civil service list. And the second is from Leisure Services Director as well for authorization to begin the civil service process for the position of golf maintenance two and to make an appointment from the civil service list.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the first two requests. Is there any discussion on those? Do we have a little overview on those, Paul?
Sure. Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director, whoa, this thing's high-powered tonight. We have an opening in forestry due to a recent transfer from one division into another. A gentleman who was on the forestry crew is now doing mowing. He's a mowing crew leader. I think you're all familiar with the backlog of work with this crew, so it's really pretty critical that we get this moving as quickly as possible so we can stay on top as best as possible of the tree removals needed with the ongoing Emerald Ash saga. The second one is golf maintenance two, and that position is due to, is open due to an impending retirement. We're also asking to fill that with just three full-time people on each golf course. Each one is critical. These positions also, the golf maintenance two are also utilized for snow removal in the winter, as well as equipment maintenance. And then, not that I want to jinx this, but they also are instrumental with floods and looking pretty good so far there.
Thanks, Paul. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Paul, is the golf maintenance full-time position? I know it's full-time, but...
Yes.
Do they really work in the wintertime?
Yes, and as I was explaining, we have equipment maintenance, but we also, they do snow removal in the wintertime, so yes.
There's no way these, are these equal positions, pay, grade, whatever?
They're close. They're very similar, but not exactly the same.
Could we do like we did in over here, have a combo person that could do both?
Well, the problem with that would be that then there would be some work that would be left undone because it is a full-time, I mean, duties are...
I mean, if you had two positions, but they're both combo positions. So, you know, one day if we really need people over here, everybody could go over there, or is there union contract problems?
I don't know if, maybe Lance could help me with this, but there are civil service classifications, and they are in the union as well. I wouldn't say the union's really an obstruction to that idea. I think it's more that we actually have, you know, full-time work for both positions. They're actually quite similar in that the wintertime, although the forestry position, we do remove trees all winter long, so I guess there is a difference there.
Is that forestry position, is he the guy cutting down trees?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
In the rig, cutting trees.
So it's more specialized than the golf?
It is. The training, the line clearance training, and safety training is quite a bit different than the golf training.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt?
Paul, so these two positions, are they both long-term employees that we're replacing?
The ones that we're replacing, the one is a retirement, yes. The other one on the park maintenance two, he's probably been in the position for, and I'm going to guess because I honestly don't know, but probably for 10 years or so.
Okay.
And he's, he's moved into a different job. And we have seen this happen in the past. The tree removal business is just playing hard on your body. So it's not uncommon to see people transfer into a different, maybe a little bit less physically demanding position after that period of time, because it really is strenuous.
So when we have somebody retire that's been here for 30 years, do we replace them then with a new person at that same rate?
The same compensation? Because that's the, the union rate. I mean, you would have the, the variables would be the...
Vacation.
The vacation, that would be different. And then you would have longevity, which would drop off for a new person. So there's, there is some margin there, but it's not a large margin.
Okay. And then I know, I know JB's in the audience. Do we have any estimate at this stage how the income for the golf courses is going to turn out this year based on the number of rounds? Have you taken a poll lately, or is that something we're going to do next month or?
We're trending up, which is good, but JB has more detail than I do on that, I hope.
I don't know if we need to go there. We're in the position of hiring somebody right now. We're not looking at incomes.
Well, but my point is, last year, my understanding is we lost quarter million dollars on the golf courses. Is that correct? Eighty thousand a course, roughly?
I think JB's got the numbers, I hope.
And my point just being, if, you know, again, if that's the case, and this year's going to be worse, if, because I know we had a terrible spring.
I'll just tell you, it's trending better. So it's moving in the right direction.
For the year or for the last?
This year as opposed to last year.
Oh, so you think the rounds are up this year?
JB, you want to address that? Or Chair, I don't know who I'm supposed to yield to.
All right. Fiscal year 16, our subsidy was approximately $95,000 per course. And fiscal year 17, at year end, it was $76,619 per course. So a significant improvement for fiscal year 17. I would say our rounds since July 1st are down just a tick, but I mean, not massively. And a big indicator for fiscal year 18 that we're in now is going to be what the spring does for season pass sales and just what the weather is. So since July 1st to now, down just slightly, but I would say we have a nice spring and we're back in business.
Rates are up too, correct?
Correct. The adult daily fee is $23 this season. It was 20 last season.
So this golf position, how critical is that from now till spring?
Very, considering that we're growing probably till end of November, and then we're going to be doing snow removal all winter with that position. And then we're probably starting to grow again late March.
Mr. Chairman?
If we had a larger crew at each course, it wouldn't be as big of a deal. But when it's a three-man crew, one guy down, that's 33% of the crew.
I think we have to keep in mind that these, both of these positions are maintenance, regardless how many rounds of golf there are.
Well, we got to pay for them, right?
I understand that. Just the maintenance still goes on.
Well, but there's alternatives.
Tom?
Mr. Chairman, Lance, this is for you. These positions, why don't we have ranges? I worked for the state, and every position had a salary range, and then you had steps. So just what Councilman Schmidt said, you didn't have a guy retire, and the new guy gets the same pay. You started down here and earned it.
Lance Dunn, Human Resources Director. All these positions are union positions, so these are all negotiated in the contract. So we, it's pretty much set in the actual contracts, the steps that are taken. So when an individual leaves, that particular person will still go back into that same salary based off the negotiations from the union contract.
We could probably then, in the next contract, negotiate a salary range?
Yeah, those are, salary ranges and things of that nature will be, are all negotiated.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks. Anyone else? Okay. We need a roll call on items one and two, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes. Okay. Those motions pass. Item number three.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Amos?
Number three is a request from city clerk to begin the civil service process and make an appointment from a one clerk two position in the city clerk's office.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this request. Any discussion on this?
Same question.
Kelly, would you like to answer this?
Overview?
Yes.
Okay. This is a replacement position. We have three clerk twos. One has transferred out to a different department. The clerk twos are responsible for customer service, so answering telephone calls that come into the city. Probably our office and the mayor's office receives the most phone calls within City Hall on a daily basis. The position also helps out with processing insurance claims, helping the insurance company with the investigations for the claims, corralling that information that the insurance company is looking for. They're the point person for a cell phone contract for the city, and then also helping out with licensing in our department as well. And then during our peak seasons, which is rental registration, assessments, pet licensing, they help out with that as well.
Is this position start at roughly 22 bucks an hour or something like that?
I believe it's, I believe the rate is about 21.
21. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Kelly, the same as a question I asked before, you don't have a salary range for this position because of a contract?
Correct. Yep, it's a union position, so the rate is negotiated in the contract.
And you could certainly negotiate for a range next time?
I wouldn't, but if, but that would be HR.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Morrissey?
I was remiss in saying something before to JB and to Paul Hudding about a manner in which they cut up, the forestry department did that work on the trees in the Cedar River, and I got to watch that, and I was just amazed at the professionalism and the work that was done, and it was something to behold, quite frankly. So thank you, because you got some really talented people there. And then the second thing is, I'll miss Shelley in your office.
Thank you, Mr. Morrissey. Anything else? If not, roll call, please.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
And that motion is approved as well.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion a second on adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Let's call our Finance Committee to order. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Whopper?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move the approval of the agenda in the minutes of September 11th, 2017.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the agenda in minutes. Any questions on either of those items? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. So we would take the first six items under travel requests.
Mr. Chairman, I can take those if it's okay.
Absolutely.
Jeff Seibro, commercial fire inspector to attend a training, 2017 Prevention and Building Safety Education Conference in West Des Moines, Iowa. Dates are October 24th through the 27th. Amount not to exceed $950. Greg Allhaim, building official to attend training for 2017 Fire Prevention and Building Safety Education, destination West Des Moines. Dates October 24th through the 27th, and the amount not to exceed $950. Kelly Felty, city clerk, to attend a conference, IMFOA conference in Des Moines, Iowa, October 18th through the 20th of this year. Amount not to exceed $165. Jennifer Sparks, permit rider to attend a conference, the ICC Permit Technician Exam Code Conference and ICC Residential Plan Examiner. That class is being held in Corville, Iowa, September 20th. Amount not to exceed $398. A motion to approve a refund request for William Love in the amount of $74.20 for garbage fees paid on property located at 156 Lobdale. And a motion to approve refund request for Brian Steagle in the amount of $24.20 for erroneous yard waste container fee billed on the property at 1433 Olympic Drive.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the first six items. Any questions on any of those? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Those... Always same sign, those, uh, those pass. Pre-auths.
Mr. Chairman, pre-authorizations to expend over one thousand dollars. Fire thirteen hundred and sixty dollars for the written test for lieutenant's promotional exam. Fire two thousand six hundred and three dollars, twenty-four cents to purchase and install office furniture for the battalion chief's office. Leisure services, four thousand one hundred dollars for replacement of inoperable diesel particulate filter and exhaust temperature sensor on leisure services forestry lift truck number three oh six. Leisure services, four thousand fifty dollars, forty cents for, uh, the purchase of ten picnic tables. Planning two thousand five hundred and eighty dollars to combine and continue abstract for the convention center property at two hundred West Forest Street. Uh, planning, uh, sixteen hundred dollars, uh, for asbestos inspection of two-two-two Walnut Street, House of Hope. Um, and police, eleven thousand one hundred and thirty dollars, two cents for the purchase of eight tasers, supplies and holsters with extended warranty. Sanitation amount estimated at four thousand forty dollars and sixty-nine cents for the IO box for garage truck number one fifty-one zero zero seven, equipment controls. And street department, sixteen hundred twenty-six dollars, seventy-four cents plus one hundred dollars for the AY radiator and oil cooler for sweeper number one nine, one one, one five.
Second.
Okay, we have a, um, motion and a second on all the pre-auths. Any questions on any of those items? Nope. Mr. Jacobs, you look like maybe you have one? No?
I, I will have to abstain on the planning for the twenty-five hundred and eighty dollars to continue the abstract for the convention center.
Okay. With that, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Always same sign, that motion passes. We have two budget line item amendments, which are unfilled at the City Clerk's office. And within that are the bills payment. Bills payment this week are two million, seven hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and ten cents, two comma, seven one nine comma, nine four seven point one zero.
Second.
Motion a second on bills payment. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, bills paid.
Most adjourned.
Second.
Motion a second and adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone, and welcome to this evening's city council meeting. Um, Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Whopper?
Here.
All right. Uh, right now is our opportunity to stand. Uh, it's a moment of silence and I did say stand, but you can stand or sit. It's all your call, so please join me. All right, thank you. Uh, this evening's pledge will be led by Housing Authority Director Julie Dawson.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Right now, have a seat.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended and we're adding item number thirteen. And item number thirteen will read, "Resolution approving an early access agreement with Ryan Companies US, Inc. to allow earth exploration and moving activities in preparation of development of the site west of the northeast industrial park and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document."
Second. The motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have a, a short agenda and, uh.
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to approve the minutes also, but September eleventh, two thousand and seventeen, regular session.
Second. And motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda and minutes. Uh, very short meeting tonight. Um, and I want to remind, I had a, a conversation, I think it was with my, uh, good friend, Mr. Chapman, to make sure that we speak into the microphones. We did better last week, but, uh, we can do a lot better this week, so just a reminder. Uh, first up on the, uh, council agenda is a proclamation and I would like to call up, uh, Barb Greggerson for Constitution Week.
Um, may I? I just have a few comments that I can make.
Yep, you gotta come on up here and I'll give you the microphone. You get to stand up here. Uh, we get to stand up here together. All right, so welcome, uh, Javerna and, uh, welcome Barb. Uh, first, we have a proclamation. I'll read the proclamation and then you can give comments, so.
Thank you.
All right, City of Waterloo, Iowa. Whereas September seventeen, two thousand and seventeen marks the two hundred and thirtieth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. Whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeen through the twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeen through the twenty-third, uh, two thousand and seventeen as Constitution Week. So big week, Barb, tell us about it, please.
Here. Come with prepared notes, so I don't ramble. Um, yesterday, September seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen, begins a national celebration of Constitution Week. The week-long commemoration of America's most important document is one of our country's least known official observances. Our Constitution stands as a testament to the tenacity of Americans throughout history to maintain their liberties and freedom and to ensure those inalienable rights to every American. The aims of the celebration are, first, to emphasize citizens' responsibilities for protecting and defending the Constitution, preserving it for posterity. Second, inform the people that the Constitution is the basis for America's great heritage and the foundation for our way of life. And third, encourage the study of the historical events which led to the framing of the Constitution on September seventeenth, seventeen eighty-seven, two hundred and thirty years ago. The United States of America functions as a republic under the Constitution, which is the oldest document still in active use that outlines the self-government of a people. This landmark idea that men had the inalienable right, and I will add women, as individuals to be free and live their lives under their own governance was the impetus of the American Revolution. Today, the Constitution stands as an icon of freedom for people around the world. Javerna and I belong to the Daughters of the American Revolution, the DAR, and has served, that organization has served America for one hundred and twenty-five plus years as its foremost cheerleader. Known as the largest women's patriotic nation, organization in the world, the DAR has over a hundred and seventy-five thousand members with approximately three thousand chapters in all fifty states and thirteen foreign countries. The DAR has long promoted patriotism through commemorative celebrations, memorials, scholarships and activities for both children and adults, plus programs for new immigrants. We thank you, the City Council of Waterloo and Mayor Hart, for this opportunity to shine a spotlight on this important event in America's history. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you. All right, thank you both. Uh, we have oral presentations at this time and it's your opportunity to let the council know what's on your heart and mind. And we did have a person that called in this evening and I would like to call up Mrs. Joyce Wilder to the podium first. State your name and address and let us know what's on your mind.
My name is Joyce Wilder and I live at two twenty-six Bates Street. And once again, I'm back down here for the sewer damage that was in my basement. Um, the city sewer department came out last Thursday with a guy who was selling nozzles to go on their truck as far as going in and cleaning out the sewer drains. Well, come to find out, he did the sixty pressure going in, four hundred pressure coming out. I didn't have any problems with my water coming up in my stool or up in my drain in my shower. So my question was to him, was this my fault? He said, no. I said, okay, so I asked Mr. Harbeck, Becker. I said, um, it wasn't my fault, so whose fault is it? I mean, you know, my basement got flooded and to me, by buying and trying and testing out the new nozzles on the truck is a big improvement because like I said, it wasn't my fault. So who's gonna take it instead of keep passing this bill on and on? And, well, passing the buck on and on, where does the buck stop? All I want to know is who's gonna be responsible for my basement? Now, if it had been my problem when this guy came in, I would've had the same problem and it wasn't my problem. I didn't have any problems. The house down the street didn't have any problems. The house across the street had some bubbling in the stool, but nothing flooded. So I'm still puzzled from the report that I seen and it didn't even go along with what happened to my basement. So I don't know who wrote it. Um, I do have a video. I recorded everything while we were talking with this guy that was selling the nozzles. So if anybody want to hear it, I got it. And he's saying shouldn't have went with the PS twelve hundred. Um, I know it's twelve hundred, six hundred going in and four hundred coming out, but the pressure that they were using was PS twelve hundred going in and I don't know what they were using coming out. But the pressure did not mess with my stool nor my drains. The last time they did it, I explained to you, the water came up out of the stool like Niagara Falls, came up out of my shower drain and it had an odor to it. And now I'm getting mildew because nobody wants to pay the bill. So the only thing I can do now is give it to my insurance, let them fight with the city unless the city has something that they want to do. Um, I don't see the lawyer. If they have something that they want to do as far as compensating me or having me even go and get somebody to give me an estimate. When Mr. Harbaker wrote the charge to Travelers Insurance, he never asked any of us to get an estimate on our basement. None of us. He never came out and looked at none of the stuff until after we had cleaned the odor up and cleaned the water up. So I just want to find out who's gonna fit the bill or do I gotta fit the bill? Do I need to get an attorney or what? It's three of us. So I'm talking for myself, my neighbors, and I just want to answer. And I know you can't answer now, but get something. And Mayor, I was gonna bring you something, but I know I can't give you a gift, but.
Two dollars and ninety-nine cents.
I got that too.
All right. Um, yeah, well, you said, so you're gonna, uh, back through your insurance company to take a look?
Right.
Okay. Okay. All right, well, I don't have a whole lot to give you right now, uh, not more than two ninety, two dollars and ninety-nine cent.
I'll take that. I can go to the dollar store.
But, um, yeah, well, yeah, we, we have been talking about this, so.
Right.
We'll see what happens in this next round, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Council, Jim Chapman, two-two-four Birch. I asked a question last week about the venture we're gonna go into with Hawkeye Tech and we're outsourcing the plumbing and electrical. And I guess I asked the question if we didn't have a program at Hawkeye to, uh, have the students go in and do the electrical and plumbing. And I believe you said you were gonna have someone get back to me on that, uh, if we do have a program out there that they could go in and do it and be inspected afterward to... I mean, after all, we're giving the property, we're giving the, the material to build the houses and I was just wondering if there wasn't programs that we could do the electrical and, uh, plumbing without sourcing it out to a private company, so.
Uh, if I told you I was going to check, I, I didn't check.
I thought you were gonna have the gentleman to your right get back to me on that, so.
I don't, I don't, I don't recall.
If I may answer that, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first of all, you'd have to ask Hawkeye about this. We're not building the houses Hawkeye is. Uh, and you'd have to ask them if they have a program in regards to that. They do have a, um, apprentice program. Whether they use that or not, that is up to them.
Okay.
Hawkeye is building the houses, we're not.
The outsourcing is, uh, being done by Hawkeye then?
Yes, they're building the houses, not us.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Magnusson, supervisor, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Frank Magzman, ten sixty-five Prospect Boulevard, Waterloo, Iowa. I'm here as representative of the, um, Cedar Valley Honor Flight. Uh, giving you an opportunity to thank the City of Waterloo for all their support. We just completed our nineteenth Honor Flight and without the help of your airport director, who, um, goes way out of his way to make everything, um, go as good as it possibly can and to the, uh, police and fire for, uh, fire being out there at five o'clock in the morning, law enforcement being out there after ten-thirty at night. Um, they make the event so worthwhile for our veterans coming back to Waterloo and getting a homecoming. Uh, next October tenth, we will have our twentieth flight out of Waterloo and I'd invite, uh, Mayor, Council to come out there and to welcome our veterans home. Uh, this last time, we had, uh, Mayor Hart was out there and, uh, Councilman Morrissey was out there, so I want to thank them. But we couldn't do this without the City of Waterloo's support, so just want to say thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, great event and thank you. I'd like to thank you and all the organizers. Uh, it was, it was, uh, a, a great opportunity to see our veterans very happy and just feel with so much joy about being able to go back and visit DC on the Honor Flight. So, uh, thank you so much. Uh, is there anyone else that would like to address the council? State your name and address.
Good evening, Todd Oberdahl, one twenty-four Amity Drive. Uh, yes, I'd like to, uh, second the last speaker. It's a wonderful job that was done out at the airport and, uh, kudos to the airport staff and to the police and fire for being out there. It's, uh, was out there in the evening, it was very, very moving. What I'd like to speak about, uh, tonight, I think it's interesting, we have the Constitution Week here and it's good to remember, uh, the hierarchy of law and how it applies to us here at the city level. Um, I came across a quote, uh, from a early twentieth century proving dictator who is famous for saying, "To my friends everything and to my enemies the law." Kind of defines what a banana republic is all about, is kind of where that term came from. Where we just had a tyrannical implementation of law and law enforcement onto political enemies. I became aware that, uh, over the last couple of weeks, there's been an investigation, people being called into a law enforcement office for what might be their connection with some sort of con- sort of conflict of interest with the previous piece of business that, that happened here. I find it interesting that that investigation is taking place at the county level, not the city level. But that's where it's, that's where it's taken place. And I, I think it's good that we are aware of conflicts of interest and we look to get rid of them. You know, we have, we just passed a resolution on Sunnyside South just last week, again. Didn't hear anything about conflict of interest in that, as a matter of fact, for six years, didn't hear anything about conflict of interest during that time. No public official or employee of a municipality or board or commission which has vested by municipality with urban renewal project or economic development project shall voluntarily acquire any personal interest as hereafter defined whether direct or indirect in any urban renewal project, property included, so on and so forth. Representative for the developing, developers spoke after me last week and said that the city did get something for the dollar, they got the road moved. I looked back and I didn't see any projects in the city that they're planning on moving that San Marnon Road in the first place, that seemed to be in the interest of the developer. Just like to cite very quickly here, Code 7211. Any officer or employee of the state or any subdivision thereof who is directly or indirectly interested in any contract to furnish anything of value to the state or any subdivision, i.e. the city, thereof, where such interest is prohibited by statute commits a serious misdemeanor. The attorney said that that was of value, that moving that road was of value. Either it was or it wasn't, but if it was of value, that was something that the city received for preference on a contract that was not open bid. Oh, and the end of that statute said if open bidding takes place, then it's okay. Let's make sure that we adhere to the laws and apply them to everyone and not just those that aren't our friends. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
Hi folks, my name is Bob Manning. I come to you tonight representing the Cedar Valley Home Builders Association. The headlines of the Courier yesterday just had great news when they talked about the French Connection in the Waterloo Schools. And it's, they're teaching French as half of the day in a kindergarten class and English in half of the day. And that this is one of the first school systems in the country that may have an opportunity like this. The Waterloo Schools is looking at doing a Spanish-English class perhaps next year of this and all, but all of a sudden, this kind of developed late, as I understand it, there were several students that were speaking, that spoke French, that were coming as kindergartners to Lou Henry School. And there were many of our residents who've been here a long time that there was a, I believe 25 or 30 people signed up to have their, their students enrolled in this class so they get exposure to both, to both sets of languages. The good part is Waterloo Schools has tried something new and I'd like to congratulate them and pat them on the back for doing that. That's exactly the kinds of things that help housing and helps our community and helps put our name and, and on the map and, and in front of other people. So certainly when you see the teachers, the principal or the school superintendent, give them an atta boy and an atta girl for what they've done. Thanks.
All right. And Mr. Manning, I need you to state an address for the record. And I had a great opportunity to go out and visit the classroom last Monday, I believe, so excellent, excellent program.
My address is 2908 West Third Street, Cedar Falls.
Gracias.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
There's no other comments from the public. I did just want to mention several months ago, I was approached by a couple of citizens about the potential for a safety issue in front of the sports walk. They'd noticed some young kids run across that street and certain times of the day, the traffic was pretty heavy coming from John Deere and some other places, so had a conversation with Paul Hudding and Sandy Greco and I'm glad to say that today we have a, a flashing crosswalk sign up there. I think Mark Gallagher was part of that too, Paul, if I'm not mistaken, but... So I got a couple of phone calls today from those same citizens complimenting the city on getting that done and nobody got hurt, so thank you very much. Who else, who did I miss? Oh, yeah, I mentioned Sandy. Yeah, yeah, absolutely, you bet. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, motion to receive and file oral comments.
Second. Motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. That's items 1A through B3 and within that are the bills payment. Bills payment this week, $2,719,947.10. That's 2,719,947.10.
Second. A motion has been made with the second, council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd just like to ask Noel that regarding item number eight, I think it's A8, regarding the public hearing on October 2nd, to have a meeting with Noel and/or Eric with some maps and that. And I'd like to have one or two of the Greenbrier residents there to understand exactly what this is, given the concerns that have been raised by Greenbrier residents where I believe that would, this kind of activity would be taking place. Just a request I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any other questions? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
All right, someone take number two.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number two is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and that's for the amendment to the amended and restated downtown Waterloo Riverfront Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan to include additional projects and update related financial information.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that have particular questions about this item or some comments?
Todd Oberdahl, 124 Amity Drive. Learned about this, looked it back up on the, on the Courier site after reading about it in, in the Courier. So my understanding, I couldn't get the, the attachments weren't online, so I couldn't see exactly what, what was being done here with all of this. But my understanding is that, and I want to be corrected if I, if I'm wrong, that we're redefining what is actually the urban renewal district, the TIF district, to include the Sullivan Convention Center. If I'm wrong about that, then I've, I've got no more to say. I'd like to point out that in the Iowa code, it says a municipality should not approve an urban renewal project for an urban renewal area unless the governing body has amended or modified the adopted urban renewal plan to include the urban renewal project. Looks like we put the cart in front of the horse on this. That if it wasn't part of the urban renewal project, if we weren't able to give tax incentives, then no one else was able to know that tax incentives were available for this property. It looks to me that this is a great opportunity to go back to the beginning and start this and do this right with an open bidding process, with access to tax incentives to any and all developers that wish to come in and develop the convention center and to have competitive bidding for the process or competitive bidding for the property. This is pretty clear language here and I look forward to the city getting its just value for this, this property that it looks to sell. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this particular item going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to close the hearing and file oral comments.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution affirming previous determination of an area of the city to be an area of slum and blight and an economic development area, determining that the development or redevelopment of said area is necessary in the interest of the public health, safety or welfare designated said area as appropriate for an urban renewal project and approving the plan amendment.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Noel, could you give us an overview of what's happening?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, as you may recall, a couple of years back, the state modified the urban renewal laws that require us to amend the actual urban renewal plan as we make changes or add projects to that. So we are not changing the TIF boundaries to include this project, it is definitely within the TIF boundaries. We are amending the plan to specifically state that this project is in there. As is described in the development agreement, which is pretty standard practice through most cities in the state, the development agreements are approved on a timely basis to help projects continue to move forward for economic development purposes. The development agreement itself states that we will have to go back and take this action as the urban renewal plan amendments take a little over a month or a half to, to move ahead. This is a pretty standard process, so we're taking that final step. It is stated in the development agreement that we will be doing this and so we're taking the final steps to process that.
Are the attachments, are the attachments on file?
The attachment should have been attached in the Nova system, so they should be online and available.
Ms. Clerk, are the attachments on file?
The attachments are on file.
Thank you, Noel. Counsel, questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So Noel, could you get a little more wordy? So this property was in the TIF, but because it was a public building, it was not identified? Is that what you're saying? And now that it's gonna be privately owned, we have to go back and identify it? I mean, what's the ultimate, forget about the development agreement, what's the cause of this?
With the new state amendments, we actually go through every year, so you'll see us going through for every TIF that we have projects in and making an amendment. We've tried to re-modify it to make it user-friendly by putting them as attachments and basically listing the properties. So you know, as you look through this one, the attachment D states the Aggrate and Aggrate Trade and Expo Center, the Upper Plaza Mall, so it, it states a lot of the last projects that we have done over the years. For this recent amendment, we did go ahead and add specifically in there that we did a development agreement with Single Speed for the former Wonder Bread Bakery Building, Dolly James 2 and High Yield 2, which are the 820 to 920 Sycamore Apartment, six buildings, the LK Waterloo, there's two actions on that, which is the convention center, the Grand Investments Project, which is on here as well, the former Flea Market Site at Sixth and Commercial. Then we had some smaller projects further down in the development area as you go east of Sixth Street is still the downtown TIF District, Officials Holding, Court Square Building, Hotel President, Three Stooges, Park Avenue Loss, Upper Plaza. So again, we're going through and specifically stating later in the year exactly which projects we have approved to fulfill that last part of the development agreement and to meet the state code. We couldn't put those in there ahead of time, either for confidentiality reasons because the project's not moving ahead or I'd have to have magic powers to know what was coming next year to put it in the plan now. If I did that, I'd pick some balls numbers, so...
So given what you said, would answer the, the issue raised by the resident at the podium?
We are doing everything in accordance with the state code. We have done it in order, we have done it in the advice of the lawyers. We have spoken with our local attorneys as well as the Allers Law Firm on how to do urban renewal plan amendments and we're doing them perfectly in accordance with that.
Thank you. Counsel, other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Noel, let me go back to, you sent me a spreadsheet with a, some highlights on there. The first thing I noticed was that TIF district has a valuation of $3.8 billion. And I, I ask every year about releasing some value. First of all, is this the time to release any value in this TIF when we're doing this action?
So the attachment C is what you're looking at? That's the bonding capacity of the entire city. We are required to put that in the urban renewal plan.
Okay, so, okay, then I misunderstood. That's not just for this TIF district?
Correct.
Okay, so go back to my question. By doing this, would, are we bypass, are we passing the opportunity to release some value from the downtown TIF by doing this action today?
That would be a separate action when you would do the TIF certifications.
Okay, all right, that's my question. And the stuff you gave me, you started highlighting some stuff, starting from number 19, it looks like.
Yes.
Those are all the additions from the original filing?
From, from the last amendment.
Right.
So we amended it, I think, in 2015 or 2016, was the last time. Because again, we're gonna be doing this every year for every TIF district that we have projects in to add those projects.
And you, you gave me a figure at the bottom of this of $217 million. Is that the total of just the yellow or is the total of everything in that spreadsheet?
That's the total of everything in this spreadsheet.
And then let me just take an example, for instance, let's just use the hotel. You have a project budget, hotel motel rebates and you give a total. Some other places you may have, like the Single Speed, you have acquisition, abatement, grant, rebates, and you give a total. The pro, is the project budget what we spent on that project?
That is, for each project, it's estimated what we, what we're, what we have to spend in different categories.
Okay, that's what I mean.
Yes.
So if I say, all right, would...
And that's, and that's why they're different and, you know, some of them we had acquisitions, some of them we had demolition, others we did not. So we try to put it as detailed and as accurate as possible when you're estimating some of these in advance while they're happening or after they've happened, they're obviously right on the number.
Okay, so for example, Single Speed, I look at this, $563,000. That's what we invested in that project?
Correct.
Okay. And I'm kind of confused that they pay taxes and then they, then we rebate some of those taxes. Why does that show up in the project budget? Isn't that just a wash or we, I guess we keep some of those taxes, don't we?
Michelle may be, may correct me, but we have to show, since the rebates, we are pledging the rebates to them, we have to show that as an expense coming out of the TIF districts, so it has to be in the plan.
Okay, because we haven't, it hasn't happened yet.
Correct.
Okay. And thanks for providing that to me.
All right, any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
I have to say.
Could someone take 3 through 5, 5 please?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lind.
I move to adopt the following resolutions. Number three, a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between Black Hawk County and the City of Waterloo regarding the ownership and maintenance of the communications tower at City Hall, 715 Mulberry Street, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said agreement. Number four is a resolution approving award of hotel motel tax council discretionary funds to the Waterloo Menincel Band, band in the amount of $20,000 and the Cedar Valley Sportsplex marketing campaign in the amount of $11,250. Number five was a resolution approving completion of project and a recommendation of acceptance of work for the multifamily activity 876, which is the Grand Crossing Housing Development.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second, council, questions? Anyone? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, could someone take 6, 7, and 8?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution accepting Iowa Department of Transportation's Office of Aviation Grant with contract number 19559 and project number 9-1-180, or wait a minute, let me rephrase that. Number 9-I-180-ALO-200 for the fiscal year 2018 Commercial Service Vertical Infrastructure, parentheses CSVI, parentheses program for the physical improvements to hangar number four at Waterloo Regional Airport and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Number seven, a resolution approving the professional service agreement with AECOM Technical Services Incorporated Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of $10,800 for the completion of the project contained in the fiscal year 2018 Iowa Department of Transportation Commercial Service Vertical Infrastructure Grant document and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number eight, a resolution approving agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for use of Commercial Street to detour Highway 63 traffic from intersection of West First Street and Commercial Street to Highway 218 interchange near Westfield Avenue.
from intersection of West First Street and Commercial Street to Highway two eighteen interchange near Westfield Avenue in conjunction with the Highway sixty-three PC pavement dash grade and replacement project, parentheses NHS six dash zero six three dash six, parentheses seven eight parentheses dash dash three H dash zero seven, parentheses from Jefferson Street to Franklin Street and authorize mayor to execute said document.
Second. Motion has been made with the second, council, any questions? Anyone with any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Couple of quick questions, uh, on the, um, number eight, do we, do they compensate us in this agreement for any maintenance because of the increased traffic? Uh, and also, do they remove snow since it's now their route? Or are we responsible for that?
All right, Erica, maintenance for usage and so.
We'll review that with them as far as maintenance. And this will be over hopefully before snow flies, this is just for a few weeks. Um, they should be out of there before Thanksgiving, so.
It's not long-term.
No, no, this is just real short-term, they're just combining a stage three and four in the sixty-three projects. They ran into a utility conflict and this allows them to keep working and that's good. The more they work, the sooner they'll get that done and get that half open, so.
Thanks.
We think it's a good thing.
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Nine and ten, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Uh, item number nine is adopting a resolution approving a contract between Wright Environment Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa for the city of Waterloo's sanitation and recycling services for a period of three years with a three percent yearly rate increase and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And item number ten is adopting a resolution approving an early access agreement with LK Holdings Waterloo LLC to allow them to make repairs in the convention center prior to the final closing date and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said agreement.
Second. A motion has been made with the second, council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, real quick question, Sandy, is that Wright Environmental, is that the gentleman that addressed us the other week, last week?
Andy.
Sandy Greco, Inter and Public Works Director.
Talk to the mic, Sandy.
Noel, uh, the people that direct, or were here a couple of weeks ago were from Blackhawk Waste.
Okay.
And right now we have a contract with Wright Environmental for these services. This is a satellite where people go to take their, um, recyclables, it's not curbside.
So we're staying with this?
Yes, and I, i- if you want to see, we did a cost analysis between Blackhawk Waste and Wright Environmental, so I have that if anybody wants to see it.
Okay, that was that, one that was kind of confusing to us all when they first.
Right, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, Sandy, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
This, what we're doing tonight is just the agreement with, uh, Wright. It's not specifically laying out where these sites would be.
No, we can actually work with them and change sites. It's just the contract that they'll be handling it.
Yep, all right, thank you, Sandy. Other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
I abstain on both nine and ten.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
All right, those items carry, eleven and twelve, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Amos.
I'd like to make a motion approving a change order number one dash one for a net increase of six thousand, nine hundred dollars for the fiscal year twenty seventeen East Fifth Parking Street, Parking Street, or East Fifth Street Parking Garage Repairs Contract Number nine thirty and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number twelve is a motion approving change order number two for a decrease in the amount of nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixteen cents to Peters Construction Corporation of Waterloo, Iowa in conjunction with the two thousand seventeen Riverfront Stadium Flood Repair Project.
Second. A motion has been made with the second, uh, council, questions? Anyone? Madam Clerk? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Those items carry.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, and, uh, oops.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving an early access agreement with Ryan Companies US Incorporated to allow earth exploration and moving activities in preparation of development of the site west of the Northeast Industrial Park and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second. A motion has been made with the second for earth exploration. Uh, questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, items carries.
Motion for adjournment.
Second.
Motion to be made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Meeting's adjourned.